Welcome everyone to our March meeting. I almost forgot what month it is. Thanks, thanks everybody for coming. We, first item of the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the last meeting. Several of our members were excused from that meeting, were out of town. I took a look through the minutes. I didn't have any changes. I'll just give it a minute and if anybody else has any changes. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the February 21st meeting. Could I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The minutes are approved as submitted. Move on to financial reports. I think we'll probably table that discussion until we have a discussion around the budget in a few minutes. With that, I'm going to turn it over to you, Tom, for any, I don't think we have a WLS report.
I just have a more or less brief one that, that our library today cut over to the new online system. Previously, we had CERCE for many, many years. Today, we cut over to the new system countywide, which is called Evergreen. And we went up around, just after 12 noon, and it was fairly smooth, pretty seamless. Things are moving forward. Staff seems to like the new system. They've been trained, but you know, they're actually seeing it in person and it's good. I think the one little hang-up at this point in time, and WLS is working on it, is the issue of holds, that you know, there was lots and lots of holds throughout the 38 public libraries, and there's some question about whether or not all of the holds were migrated over to the new system, but they're working on it. But that's the only issue, so I'm excited to say that today is the first day of a new system for New Rochelle and the county.
Are we, is this system used by everybody or just the staff? Is this like this?
Everybody.
Do we, are we offering any, maybe it's totally intuitive, but do we, are we offering any training or if people are trying to use it?
We're, we're actually providing one-on-one support, but it is actually reasonably intuitive, far more intuitive, we think, than the system that we had previously, which was a CERCE system. But we're gonna, we're gonna just see how things go and we'll make changes if we feel we need to have classes. But you know, my observation, I've used it a few times, it looks fairly intuitive and other people seem to think so too, but we'll, we'll watch.
That's great, and everybody's been, the staff has all been trained, so they can help patrons if they have questions.
Right, we actually, a few Wednesdays ago, we closed for the morning so that we could have in-house, hands-on training here, so that people felt comfortable when we finally cut over.
Perfect, that's great. I don't have a report today, so I'm going to turn it over to you, Tom, for your director's report.
Thanks Chuck. As always, I'm just telling you that the two New York State Library grants that we, that were approved last year, the $160,000 for our second floor renovation, it is in Albany. We expect that it will be formally approved in June and we'll see a check in August. Same for our Huguenot Children's Library grant, which is far less money, just almost $10,000 for a new gas boiler for our, for our Huguenot Children's Library, also waiting on approval and then the money will arrive, we expect, in August. The big news in terms of what's going on, other than the migration, which is certainly exciting, is the fact that we are now well underway in terms of our circulation gateway project. We started last week and we're moving forward. Yesterday, we were actually closed, so that we could complete the demo of the old registration desk. That desk is gone, there are still some components that are there, and it's been pretty smooth for the most part, I have to say. We've been working with our subcontractors, but I would be totally remiss if I didn't applaud, and I mean truly applaud with a capital A, the efforts of our custodial team, Rob Florin, who's our lead custodian, and Mike Capruzzi, who is another custodian on the staff. When we, when we decided to do this project, we decided not to have a general contractor, we decided to function in that capacity. We saved money and we also had more control. But I have to say, the kind of work that Mike and Rob have been doing have been far and above more than what any other custodial staff would do. They've just been great. And it's really been challenging, because our third custodian injured himself and has been off, and so they've been doing this extraordinary construction work, all kinds of components related to that, shorthanded by one, by one, by the third of the staff. So Rob and, and Mike are truly worth praise. I'm gonna, I'd like to probably talk to the Personnel Committee about some other kind of recognition, because I really think that what they've done is exceptional, so. But our project's moving forward. We're, we're now working on the registration desk side. We're doing some demo where our electrician is there, our low voltage person is there. Next week, we're gonna just clean up some of the unforeseen conditions when things were pulled up and off, and we will expect the, not next week, but the following week, to bring back our painter, to bring back our carpet person, and then to install the new circulation desk. So, so we're moving. We still have things further to go in terms of our security desk and our security gate, et cetera, but I'm very excited about this project, and I'm really excited about the, the work that Rob and Mike have done, and also Daniel O'Gerry has worked really hard, and our circulation staff has pulled together and has been flexible, so that's, it's worth mentioning. And you know, we're still working. Other than that one day, we're still functioning. Having said that, I just want to point out that our foundation is having its board meeting this Monday at 7:45 here, and they will be considering our request to fund programs at the Huguenot Children's Library. And as you know, the merger of sorts has happened between the foundation and the partnership, and so we have a nice suite of programs that will relate to our September to June, as well as our annual summer fund on the patio program. And it's also worth mentioning that at, at the previous foundation board meeting, they gave us an additional $34,000. $25,000 was from a family foundation grant, and additional monies, and that allowed us to provide, do a major upgrade in terms of the audiovisual and much of the lighting system here in, in this theater. And it was great, it was well needed.
Wasn't that a fancy projector up there?
Yes.
That looks new.
Yeah, it is new. It's, it's Blu-ray and high definition, and what's really great is, beyond all that, the new pyrotechnics, it's far more user-friendly. So, both our staff-
I hope it doesn't shoot on fire.
Well, it could be dangerous, depending upon what board members or members of the public say, but anyway. So, so that again, is the foundation, time and again, has stepped up and supported us in all our efforts and, you know, we're really fortunate to have them. Our friends, of course, are working very hard in coping with the lack of an elevator, and we'll talk about that, the Buildings and Grounds Committee report, but their next big book sale is April 5th and 6th, their board meeting will be April 10th. And, oh, one grant I wanted to mention, that I'm very excited about, and this is a grant that we believe we're going to obtain, and it's through the efforts of Dr. LaRuth Gray and Senator Andrea Stewart-Cousins. It'll be a $100,000 grant to help us defray the cost of the circulation desk, and we finally heard from the Dormitory Authority about a week ago, and we started the application process, and we had a, we had a conference called Gene and myself to, to talk about that, so we're pushing forward with, with that, hope to see that money in the not-too-distant future. And as you know, in New Rochelle, events and galas are, are, are popular and-
Plantiful.
Plantiful. And, and in your packets, there are a bunch of events that I want to mention, and Dan, Daniel may mention too, but you know, on March 20th is State of the City, on March 28th, there's an Interfaith Seder through the Coalition for Mutual Respect, which I've attended and always found really interesting. April 4th is the New Rochelle Fund for Educational Excellence, in which our former board chair, Hamid Just Michael, will be honored. April 10th will be the Rotary Club of New Rochelle's 100th anniversary, and Dr. Gray, Chris Sellen, the late Kathy Cronin, and myself will be honored for contributions. April 11th, next day, is the Hope Gala, and May 9th is the, is the, our gala, our foundation gala. So those are all events, and it would be great if we could be represented, you know, at a, at a variety of them. And that's it.
For the, what meeting, the foundation meeting? We have a doodle poll that we signed ourselves, I'm just trying to remind myself-
Was that for the foundation or the other one? That was for the Friends, I think.
Sorry, oh, okay. I just wanted to-
I don't think I did it for the foundation, but I think I talked about doing it.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I put the dates that I signed up for.
You're in there.
I'm on the doodle.
Not everybody did, but you're in there.
Oh, Whitney's in there, Sarah's in there.
I did it too.
Oh, the ladies did it.
I think I did it.
Not on, okay, I'm not, we're, I'm not-
I did it, I was late.
Gentlemen, step up.
Friends meeting.
I was late in the year.
Whitney, Sarah, Yedir and Deirdre. No disrespect, but it is-
So which poll did I do? Whose, whose meeting am I attending?
I, I might have done one then for the, for the fund then.
This one, right, I remember Friends.
No, I know he's saying I did one for the fund, and he feels like he signed up for it, so.
I thought I signed up for something else too.
All right. I just wanted to line up the poll.
I will, I will, why don't I do this? I will take responsibility for telling you guys.
Okay. Which, where we sign up?
Where you are, yes.
Okay.
I think mine didn't save.
I'm sure, that's exactly what it is. It didn't save.
Yes Chuck.
I have the gavel, so be careful. I did. You were done?
I'm done.
Thank you.
I have one, I have one question. It seems like sometimes the fund does those conversation things on a board night, like tonight.
You mean the cocktails and conversation?
Like tonight, can you have a conversation with Chris?
About the conversation?
About the conversation, and just mention, that'd be great if the, if you, you know, just mention, it would be great if we could-
Coordinate.
I think like the last three have been, on the second Thursday, like it was in September, this one, and there was one other one, and I think we tried to go before, but it just doesn't, but then we have a meeting, right.
I went over, yeah, I popped over and had a seltzer and then came back.
See, I bought a ticket and I gave it to Elise Burke from WLS, so that she could attend. She wanted to attend.
So just, it's just a conversation, so if you can, think, you know, they would like to be able to support it.
I will, promise, yeah, because it's inconvenient, yeah.
I think we'd like to be supported.
Yeah, it doesn't give us a chance to support what they're doing.
And they were expecting a pretty big crowd, over almost 70 people last night.
They did, they were tonight too, it was packed. It was packed.
I think the new, next item on the agenda, sorry, is the personnel report.
Yep, and my report is fairly brief. As I had announced at the last meeting, we have a new person filling an upgraded position, and that person is Denise Ramirez Link, and she will be starting as the Community and Services Support Specialist here at our library on March 18th. Her annual salary will be $48,530, and I'm asking for a board resolution to, you know, to accept this offer of employment.
And make a, a motion to approve the, sorry, I just got distracted.
I'm sorry.
Make a motion to approve Denise's appointment. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Thank you. She's a great addition, part-time staff for many years, and it's great to have her start.
So, we may have another scheduling conflict with the foundation. You had emails, sorry, about the, the-
The budget hearing.
Our next board meeting?
Right.
When do you think it needs to happen?
Well, I have been in touch with Liz Sarah Eva, who's the Board of Education clerk, and she asked me when our budget hearing was, and I told her it was May 2nd, and she responded, she said, you know, because the, the budget vote is late this year, you're, you're actually having a budget hearing and it's too early. She suggested that we meet the following week.
Which is May 9th.
May 9th.
But May 9th is also the-
The gala.
Foundation gala.
So we can't do May 9th.
So maybe we can do a-
A special meeting?
Right.
So, so it has to be, when is the-
The window.
Yeah, when's the actual day it has the vote?
Should know that, I sent that in an email.
Well, you can look.
Yeah.
And let us know, but it can't, I, May 9th was the date that you threw out there, and so I just said to Chuck, because I just saw, it can't be May 9th.
Can't, it can't be that, it can't be that evening. I mean, we could have our regular meeting on the 2nd and have the-
Do a special-
Right, and have a special budget hearing on another evening.
I'd rather just do one meeting.
Yeah, makes sense, gets it all done.
Which is what we've done in the past, right, the 7th and then-
Right, 7th and then, the 7th is the budget hearing, and then 7:30 is the monthly meeting.
So just, if you could send out some dates to the-
I think, I'll, I'll check, but I think she wrote, it has to be between 9 and 14-
Or 7 and 14, yeah.
7 and 14 days.
Like we're stuck if, we're kind of-
Of the actual election.
Yeah.
And when it's-
21st, that I know.
So the 2nd's too far out, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's the 9th, and then what's the 9th, what's after the 9th?
But, but the caveat on the other side is, we have a, an annual, an annual mailer that tells about the library budget, and we can't send it out until after the hearing, after it's formally approved. And so literally, we dropped that, that document the next, the next morning. So it's, we'll try, have to try to find it, a time that's legal, but also gives enough time, because-
Why can't we open it up?
I don't want to do that. I mean, because we do it at 7 o'clock and then we do our meeting, so even if we did it 6 o'clock-
I think the gala probably starts at like 6:30 or something.
What time is it on the theater?
I have it.
Cocktail.
So why don't we, we could maybe do it the 7th, the Tuesday?
Yeah.
That's the 14th day out from the 21st.
We probably need to look at what the theater availability is, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So you can look at the date, like proposed dates and availability, is the question.
So I think we should just try to make sure we settle that in the next couple of days, so we give everybody plenty of advance notice of the timing of the meeting.
Oh, we will, absolutely. Once we have a date, we'll use social media as well as the, the website. We'll also have corrected signage.
Sorry, we're breaking.
No, no. Is there anything else from the Personnel Committee? I'm sorry, the Personnel Report?
No.
We'll go on to the committee reports. First item is the budget. So I think everybody should have in their information packages, sort of a colorful email that has two pages, and then, is the backup stuff in here too?
Yep, there's the actual budget itself, the different options, as well as your email and my email underneath.
So there's the email with the kind of maroon and blue, and then this document, which has the-
The three options.
The three scenarios. So, you want, do you want, do you want to do this? Okay. So the Budget Committee, which is comprised of Yedir, Deirdre and myself, you know, convened with Tom and with Gene, after Tom and Gene had done a lot of work with the staff to understand, you know, what the budgetary needs, or the resource needs were for the coming year, and then put together a budget based on those needs. And as we've, and I mentioned this at the last meeting, just to give everybody a heads-up, as in prior years, we looked at several, we asked Tom to look at several different budget scenarios, and you know, we, we, you know, did a scenario that was flat till last year, and I'll go through in a minute, sort of, the various scenarios. We did a scenario that was up 2% from last year, and then initially, the, Tom had put forth sort of, sort of his wish list budget for the library, which was up 6.07-
6.07.
6.07%, and then we had further discussions and were able to get the 6.07% down to 3.91%. So we basically, tonight are going to run through three scenarios, flat, 2% up, and 3.91% up, which is similar to what we, you know, the approach that we took last year. So, you know, maybe I'll, I'm going to start with the major drivers of the increases in the budget from last year. So we have a contract, a union contract, that covers the vast majority of the library's staff. That contract was negotiated two, three-
Three, over three, because it's a four-year contract.
Right.
Three years ago.
Three years ago.
And that contract has mandated increases as agreed, you know, when we went through the collective bargaining exercise. So the biggest increase is approximately $100,000, related to the 2.75% increase that's already been mandated via the contract that we signed, in folks' salaries. And that also has, you know, impacts some of the, some of the, some of the salary increase relates, and then impacts the benefits costs. So the, the other, so it's $100,000 for that approximately. About $65,000 of increase in benefits costs, including New York State Retirement Plan, which is the biggest, about $40,000, medical insurance increases of $15,000, Social Security, dental plan, et cetera. So that sums up to about $65,000. You know, anybody that reads the newspaper or is, you know, paying attention to anything going on in the world, probably that won't shock anybody. And then, you know, we do have other, other smaller increases, our WLS Westchester Library System dues are going up by about $5,500, and there's this, you know, smattering of other smaller items, but those are the big drivers of the increase, the need for increased funding. And so, to run through the different scenarios, if we were to, you know, look, you know, if we were to have a flat budget, basically because of the cost increases that I just described to you that are mandated and we can't have any control over, any, a flat budget scenario would imply that we would have to cut services, which we, you know, when we look at our total expenditures relative to the amount of people in our city, and you know, Tom would be able to be far more eloquent than I on all the statistics, but we have one of the lowest per capita costs, operating costs in the, in the county, and I'm sure if you expanded that beyond the county, it would be pretty compelling as well. And so we, you know, we, we, you know, are not going to recommend a flat budget, because of the fact that it would imply these material, you know, cuts to services.
And we're already at 3.
And we're, yeah, I mean, look, we go through, we go through a bottoms-up budgeting exercise every year. We don't, you know, what, what we don't do is sort of assume what we spent last year, we should spend this year. We really look at, you know, all the expenditures to make sure that they really, and so if we, if we were to do the flat budget, we would have to cut hourly staff, the amount of time that they would be here, which would obviously impact the service that we could provide. We would have to materially cut our, I'm using the word material too much, we would have to dramatically cut our materials budget, you know, money that we spend both on, you know, hard copy kind of print materials, but electronic materials, et cetera, and you know, we, that, that, you know, that would obviously have impacts on the service that we provide to the community. So that, that would be the impact of a flat budget scenario. The up 2% scenario would allow us to fund the, you know, the increases that I mentioned before. We would have still to cut the materials budget, less than we would have to cut it on the, in the flat scenario, and we would also, you know, have less, as you know, our building is aging infrastructure, and some of the money that we, that we put in the budget to deal with repairs and needs that come up, we would, we would cut that out of the, out of the budget. And so, so less cuts than in the flat scenario, but still cuts nonetheless. The, the 3.91% increase would allow us to do all the things that I've just mentioned, and the other big things, we would increase the amount of outreach via Meet the Parents Nights to the schools. We do that already, but we want to do more of it to better connect the library, you know, to the schools and to the students in the schools, you know, given the fantastic resource that the library provides. And then the other big one is, we, folks will know that we have a, you know, a lot of historical materials here, and we currently have a part-time person that is sort of archivist that, you know, catalogs those materials. We get a lot of people approaching us to give materials to us, which is fantastic, but we have to go through all that stuff, and we can't keep it all, right? If we, if we kept everything that everybody gave us, it would be bursting out the doors. And there's a reality that somebody that's qualified and understands, you know, is an archivist, really goes through this stuff and figures out what makes sense to keep, what doesn't make sense to keep, and when we decide to keep it, to make sure that we preserve it and store it appropriately. And so right now, we have a part-time person, we're proposing in this 3.91% increase scenario that we make that position full-time, and I think that's the basic gist of that.
That's the basic gist, to preserve our historical collections, organize it, make it accessible in the library and electronically, and we had a history of working with the New Rochelle Schools when there are, when there are research projects, and we can better work with our student population if we have an archivist who can provide those primary resources to help students learn and how to research, a skill that, you know, young people still need.
I, I told you he'd be much more eloquent than I do. And then, we also, in this scenario, increased the bandwidth, the internet bandwidth available. We did that last year, but there's, the thirst for internet bandwidth is, will probably not surprise anybody, is pretty insatiable, and so we want to double the broadband availability to what we currently have. Look, there's a lot of people in the community that don't have internet access in their homes or other ways, and so, you know, we feel that this is a really important resource for the community, and we want to make sure people can have ready access, and then-
And I think, sorry, in particular, I think, Tom, you noted that there's a window of time where the broadband dips, right? So after school, there's like a two and a half window, so the kids can't log on, you know.
It's terribly so, it's frustrating to all of our patrons, because just, as Chuck used the phrase, a thirst, an incredible thirst, and it's true. So, because we have this great contract through the county, we can double our broadband access and continue to meet the needs of our patrons, you know, in a, in a more timely manner.
And then, the only other item that I'll mention is an increase in, so, you know, we have these security guards that work here, who are contractors, they don't work for the library, who haven't had a raise since 2014, and so we've budgeted money to provide a raise to, you know, we, we pay that to the contracting firm and then they pass it through to the, to the, to the folks. And so, that's the, that's the budget. So I'll just recap at a high level. The 3.91% increase is a $213,000 increase from last year. The 2% is a $109,000 increase from last year, and the, I don't know, I had to look at the paper, the flat budget is a zero increase from last year. Pretty straightforward. So, look, the, the Budget Committee is going to recommend the 3.91% option. We feel that it is, you know, responsive to the needs of our community, and, you know, there's realistically, as I went through, about $160,000 of our expenses, full-time salary increases that are already mandated and benefits-related stuff, so we're, we're increasing the, you know, the, most of it's, the controllable piece that we're increasing is very, very minimal. And so, you know, we, we feel that we're sort of being quite prudent and with a, with a budget that is already one of the lowest per capita in the county. So we, we understand the burden on taxpayers is immense, and, you know, the, the, but, you know, we feel that this is, we're being responsive to the needs of the community as articulated directly to us and as, you know, as we sort of see and observe through the, the staff and the director, you know, working day-to-day in the facility. Questions?
Do you have a question there?
Thank you. I guess I just am not in agreement with increasing it and going over the state cap. And from, I spoke to Chuck earlier in the week, and typically, we do go over the state cap, which I just don't think that we should be doing. I mean, 2% is the state cap, it exists for a reason, a lot of people don't get raises at 4%, which is what we're asking for the budget to go up. I understand we want to be responsive to the community needs. I think that we provide so many services, I think that our outreach is great, and I just, I don't agree with going over the state tax cap.
Thank you. So, actually, I-
Yeah, so, actually, I, I'm in agreement, and I just wanna comment that 90% of, with, not with Sarah, Chuck.
With the 3.9.
With the 3.9. I'm in agreement with the 3.9. 90% of those costs are going directly to salaries and benefits, so I don't know how much control we would have on that increase. So I think if the argument is for the remaining 10%, which is roughly, I think, $20,000 of a $5.7 million, $5.8 million budget, then that's a conversation to have, but I don't know if it's worth everyone's time at that point, when 90% of it is not, is an uncontrollable expense.
And I think, you're probably gonna say, we sat on the union contract negotiation. Our staff had gone four years with very minimal, just to put context to the 2.75 salary increase, which impacts salaries and of course then the residual is the benefits. Our staff had gone four years, where I think two years were zeros.
Zeros.
And then the last two years were 1%, I mean.
One, or, no, it was one and a half.
One and a half. And so many of our staff members, as you all know, are, in fact, the people we negotiated against, are New Rochelle residents, you know, they're our neighbors, their kids are in our schools, and they put in an extensive amount, they put so much work and pride into the project, into the services they provide our community, which we know are well beyond maybe what I even thought a traditional library was until I joined the board with respect to social services and helping, you know, make the, just make information accessible. That the 2.75% was something that we felt really honored, their work, and was also tiered, because our first year wasn't, last year was two and a half, and I think the year before was two or two, two and a quarter. And so that was a long process, it was about six or seven months, if I remember correctly, between start to end date. But part of it was, we didn't want to walk away with our neighbors not receiving any increase for the foreseeable next four years.
And we also didn't want to walk away just giving increases willy-nilly. So we spent a lot of time, we, we made it gradual, and we really thought about what this means for our community. And so for me, assuming that people don't get raises, it's just not a good baseline. The assumption that, okay, so people, not everybody gets raised, I get it, but it's just not how I want my employees to assume that we're gonna operate.
Could I just, so, sorry, sorry.
And, and the big, big issue, that issue, and the big issue is, there's so much of this budget that we don't have any say over because of the contract. So where we do, I think we should try to make sure we're providing the services that we can and not just accepting what we have and being kind of deliberate in saying, we're gonna be the library that provides good services.
Chuck, no, the thing I just wanted to add was, to give context also on the, the increases in the contract, in, there was, we did an extensive survey of contracts that have been done also in surrounding towns, and we were, we were not on the high end. We were not on the lowest end, we were sort of in the middle, if I recall correctly.
Low, I was gonna say middle-low. I mean, we were hoping that we were, I remember when we did the research.
We were like, there's no way this is standard.
Right.
And we were actually not even close to high.
Right, right. We were out of whack.
And not just Scarsdale, comparable libraries.
Yeah, we were out of whack.
Not to throw our friends out.
So I just wanted to add that in context. So in the capacity I am in working in non-for-profit, a lot in our county and a lot of organizations, and I, what I want to say is I, I support this, us going over the tax cap, because even in, in organizations and non-for-profit, the COLA, the Cost of Living Allowance Increase, and we, we don't want to be, as a board and as a community, to be in that place where, number one, it's part of our contract to provide those increases, but also creating this full-time position to preserve our history, which that person will also benefit, and our cost of living is increased, and we want to be competitive in this industry where, you know, we, we, we don't want turnover, where we're having a lag of services in our, in our library. And, and so with that being, being said, I mean, it's happening across the county from OMH to Oasis to different organizations, youth bureaus and everything, it's, it's passed and, and a lot of organizations have, you know, it's, it's hurt some organizations, but the benefit of that is it's, it's helped the productivity and people feel good that they're getting this, so I, I, I support this.
Sorry. Well, I just wanna make it clear, the 2%, the tax, staying within the tax cap, it still does give those increases to the workers, that's built into it. So it's not like I'm saying that people shouldn't get the raises that are in the contract, they definitely should, that's part of the contract. I'm just saying that we shouldn't go above that. Of course, people should be paid, especially if we're in contract. And then I don't know if it was misinterpreted, but my comment about how people don't get raises at 4%, I mean, like, the taxpayers, not within the union contract. Whatever, whatever was, you know, negotiated as far as the contract, that's the contract, and we obviously have to honor that.
I think the one thing I was impressed with, Tom, when you proposed the full-time position for the archivist, was you had tried to make it work with hourly and with different staff, and what you found was that the quality and consistency of the material we were able to save and the manner with which it was documented, in other words, scanning a picture, saving the picture, filing it the right way so that it would be user, just really wasn't working out.
Wasn't working.
And then you tried it the more efficient way, so I just want to commend you for not sort of just saying, I want 50 grand for a new position. But you, I felt, and Chuck and you can chime in, that you sort of presented that you had tried other ways to, to maneuver and think about things along the materials line. That was a number that last year we negotiated to give you a portion of it and then give a portion this year, but that the materials come from your sort of talking with the staff and thinking about what the staff and the community need to sort of continue our services. And so I think that was, again, not just sort of an ask, but something that we had sort of discussed over time a little bit. And Chuck, I don't know if you wanna discuss a little bit of our fund, did we, I know we discussed a little bit about allocating part of the, in terms of coming to the 3.9, maybe just explain a little bit of what we sort of did to get to that number, so it doesn't feel like.
Sure.
Just to provide more clarity.
Yeah, there, there are, and I don't know if it's in the pack, but, but there, you know, the, the, you know, we have an accrued fund balance, which is from, you know, prior years' budgets that weren't spent, you, whatever you don't spend, you accrue in this fund balance. And, you know, there's, there's recommendations under New York State Municipal Finance laws around how much of that fund balance you should sort of maintain relative to your overall budget. But you, you shouldn't, you can use that fund balance for one-time items, you shouldn't use it to fund ongoing operations, because you would spend it down and then you would run out of money and it's not sustainable. But we, we will use this year, well, we have to approve it separately, but we're, you know, the, the, the budget committee in consultation with the finance committee will probably put forth a recommendation to use some portion of that accrued fund balance to pay for some one-time expenses. I think we've talked about potentially some computers and.
Right, we talked about.
And I don't think, we're not gonna recommend that tonight, but we are also looking at other, we're making sure that we're not, that we're maintaining an appropriate fund balance, that we're, but that we're not maintaining an excessive fund balance, and so we're gonna use that for some one-time, we're gonna propose that we use that for some one-time items.
Right, and it's also worth mentioning that over and above the budget, the library, the board, the staff makes every effort to find funding outside of taxpayers, whereas, whereas it might be New York State Construction Grant money. We're lucky enough to have two extraordinary support and advocacy organizations like our foundation and Friends, you know, economic development money. So we're, we, it's hard, I mean, because the New Rochelle taxpayer is, is carrying a burden, we understand that. So what we try to do is provide great library services, do it effectively, efficiently, and find other places to find, to find the money to help us continue to provide great services and to keep our facility in great shape, have great programs, all of that.
I just, I have a question. One thing that the 3.9 does is, which I can't tell at the 2%, is that it provides adequate funding for expected medical insurance.
No, it's, it's, we, it's falling a little short there.
It is.
In which one?
And, and the 2%.
And the 2%, it doesn't do it.
No, not entirely.
So then what do we do? Because that's something.
We'd have to find money from some other account, right?
To pull from another line.
So then we, yeah, so then, so then the 2% really isn't.
It doesn't meet all of our, all of our needs.
It doesn't meet our needs, period.
No.
Okay.
No, and it's also short on the, the New York State Retirement.
On the Retirement as well, yeah. So that just doesn't, that doesn't work.
Insurance.
Insurance. That just doesn't work, anyway.
And what about the building contingency, 4.9?
We'd have to cut that.
We'd have to cut that.
For the, for the first, for the flat and the 2% have to be cut. And what does that mean exactly?
What's in that?
Well, honestly, I mean, Gina's laughing and Mary's laughing, because they know that this year, more than any year certainly that I've been here, we have had a variety of building failures. Well, the elevator. And, but we've had HVAC failures, we've had all sorts of building failures, we're building that's well over 40 years old, and that contingency provides some Band-Aid assistance to meet those, to meet the needs of a, of a physical plant emergency. And so we use that money, we try to use it wisely so that we deal with these unexpected problems or disasters.
So, so, so the 4.9 would be cut. In a year like this, if we didn't have contingency funding where we had a bunch of hiccups, what would we have done?
Well, we would have tried to find money from other accounts and hope for, you know, for example, a fairly warm winter. And, you know, sometimes people are, are, you know, are, leave a job and we might leave a position open for a period of time. You know, so we're, we're, we're trying to find ways and means to do it, and I have to say Gina's really, really good at, at analyzing the budget on a daily basis and looking to, you know, essentially plug, plug the leaks that we encounter because of this facility that's, you know, beautiful but also aging.
I would just say it really helped last year when we were talking about the budget to be able to break it down, because we can use kind of like big terms, like let's not break the tax cap, and everyone says, oh, you know, it sounds very daunting, but what does a $213,000 tax increase actually mean to your, to our taxpayers here on an annual and then on a monthly basis? I know we have approximately 80,000 people, some of them are children and don't pay taxes, but if we were to break it down, it would be, you know, right, I think Gina had figured that out.
No.
What was that? How much per?
It was like $3 a month or something, per household.
What, what typically, yeah, what happens is when we, when the board approves a budget, whatever that budget might be, I reach out to the Finance Commissioner, we have a new Finance Commissioner this year, Mark Zulli, who's a great guy, and I will share all our information, and I'll ask him to, as in Howard Ratner and Tracy Yoggman before, will give us the information on what the average New Rochelle taxpayer pays in terms of library, library taxes. If this budget goes through, it will mean that there'll be an average increase of X amount of dollars. Tomorrow, if whatever budget passes, I'll be reaching out to Mark and I'll ask him for an analysis, and I'll be sharing it with the board and with the community.
But last year it was 3.9. It was like 3.9 last year?
No, the fund balance.
No, this increase was, right?
Yeah.
So it was like $3?
It was like $3.13 or something a month, like a, I think a month maybe, or a year, it was like a cup of coffee equivalency.
Right, which doesn't sound like a lot, it's just when you're in the habit of going over the tax cap year after year, I think, you know, it starts to add up, and it's just something to look at and say, why do we continually go over the state tax cap? That exists for a reason.
What's the reason?
For the state tax cap? The state decides that that should be the tax cap. So is it a?
Yes. Last comment, last comment. I think the, when you look at a building like this and you wonder why things start breaking down, it doesn't happen by accident, it's because you start making cuts. And when you start making cuts, you don't see it immediately, but you see it over time. Then you have, oh, we saved $2 here, but now it's a $5 million problem. So you have to be conscious of when you're cutting something that you may feel isn't as important, because maintenance is the best way to prevent a real disaster happening in a building. So I think that when you look at a budget and you have certain line items in here, you have to be very careful, because one of the easiest places probably maintenance, oh, we can probably cut back an hour here and here. And then the next thing you know, oh wow, why is the floor dirty? Oh wow, why is that happening? Because when you make those type of cuts, it just, over time, you see the wear and tear of a building. And I do feel like, I do feel like we see it here.
I mean, it's beautiful, but we see it here.
Well, what building cuts, maintenance cuts, would be made then with the 2%, the 4.9 building?
I think it's more of.
Which is the, the money that would go into the fund balance that is pretty.
Or be spent, depending on.
Or be spent, right.
Whether there was.
But the fund balance does exist for things that come up like that, like the elevator and things like that.
Correct, yeah. But the elevator happens because you don't have the maintenance, you don't have the right staff there.
Well, you have the wrong company.
Yeah, the elevator may be a different situation.
That's usually often, but in this instance, it was.
We'll talk about the elevator in a minute.
Good news there.
Yeah, I, do you wanna make a motion?
I think it's about to be 3.9% of the budget for the 2019, 2020.
I'll second.
Well, you're supposed to say all of them.
No, you need a second.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Sir.
The budget is passed as presented at 3.9, with a 3.91% increase year-over-year. Building and grounds committee.
Oh, I guess we're talking about the elevator. This is joy.
Sit back and relax.
It is a tale. It's like Gilligan's Island.
Do you wanna start with that, Tom?
Sure.
And then we'll talk, I'll leave that elevator update to you, because I know it's the never-ending saga.
It is a never-ending saga. It really is. Well, as you folks have heard me recount, month in and month out, our elevator has been down, non-functioning since November. And this was particularly disconcerting, because of course, less than four years ago, we had spent a sizable amount of money to modernize it, bring it online. The vendor that had won the contract was also the vendor, contract to modernize it also was the vendor that was our maintenance vendor. So the elevator stopped functioning, we had no notice prior to that. The vendor in question told us that they would tell us what the problem was for an excessively large amount of money. We decided to pass on that offer, and we actually sought out another second-party opinion about what the problem was. And then we, we contracted with a construction litigation attorney to help us deal with this issue. Their, their recommendation was to bring on board an expert about elevators, who has tremendously helped us and helped us discover that in fact, we did nothing wrong, this elevator should be functioning, and there was some level of ineptitude in the installation and the maintenance of the elevator. So after a protracted process, the, a very long protracted process, the consultants that we had hired initially, as well as the, the vendor that had modernized the elevator and maintained it, came to the table and agreed that they would pay for the restoration, essentially the, the jack that stopped, that stopped functioning, which caused the elevator to stop functioning. And we were under the impression that, that this work would happen within a, a week time period. And when we scheduled the elevator company to come, to, to come in, they started the work, we had our consultant there, taking photographs along with our lead custodian. And so we were able to see that there, that the jack was damaged, and not because of the water that we had in the basement, but because there was some sort of mistake made when it was installed. So we were moving forward, everything was fine. We received a request to have a conference call with the, that initial consultant, the elevator vendor, and ourselves. So we started the conversation, and they told us that, that the elevator had stopped functioning because of water in our basement and made these claims. Now, we were lucky enough to have our consultant on the line, and our lead custodian refuted, refuted their claims, they backed off, which is great. The, the, the bad side of this tale is that we were under the impression that they had ordered the jack, but they had not, because the likely mindset was they were going to try to coerce us into believing that we had something to do with this problem. We did not, our. Our consultant testified as such. And, and so they did agree to pay for everything as they promised, but they also informed us that now they had to order the jack because they hadn't before, which meant that we had to wait an additional six to eight weeks. So that was two weeks ago. We're waiting. It's incredibly frustrating. But, you know, we really decided to fight them and not be taken advantage of because we did nothing wrong. It was their ineptitude or incompetence or something else. And I have to be honest with you, I've been an administrator for thirty years and I have never dealt, I've never seen as sordid, shady behavior as I have in this instance. It's really poor. And we're sticking to our guns. We're in touch with them. The other aspect of this, the good news is that we did finally find an approved vendor who could waterproof the pit. And they, they did. The elevator pit is, is remained dry. The idea was not to allow the water to come in and then pump it out. We set up a system where the water will not be allowed to come into the pit. So that's the silver lining in this lousy story. But, so that's where we stand.
And when do we think?
We think in about, we think in about a month. Yeah.
The jack will be here.
The jack will be here and then they have to install it.
In a month.
Yeah. So that's where we stand. We've been, as I said, we've been very insistent that they be responsible for their work. And, and, you know, to be honest with you, we could have fixed this a long time ago and would have paid a premium for it. And it just wasn't right. It wasn't fair. And we certainly don't want to inconvenience our residents, our staff, but we also don't want to pay sixty, seventy thousand dollars for an error that they committed. So that's, it's really, really raised my hackles. It's really unfortunate.
So Tom, that was a city awarded contract, right?
No.
Was it?
No, it was.
Library awarded.
It was a library award. We had a project manager who recommended that we hire this consultant, not the one that we have now, but another one. The consultant put out a public bid and the vendor won that bid.
So can you put a note in that vendor's file?
Oh.
Usually for, in New York City, if you have an issue, that goes in your file. And that's permanently in your file. So when you look for another RFP with another agency. They have a notice of.
You know, I'm not familiar with that. I'd like to learn more about it. We, we have been talking with our, our construction attorney about next steps, you know, just thinking about what, you know, what we could consider doing. And I'll, I'll ask more about that. And if you have something, if you could share, Corey, because I'm really upset that I feel like they took advantage of us. They didn't stand by their work and it's not right.
Maybe just.
Well, even as a last suggestion to the, or an ask of the Buildings and Grounds Committee is, is once this gets resolved, perhaps do we consider like immediately rebidding this? Or maybe you guys already talked about immediately rebidding this contract.
The consultant is going to help us come up with an RFP, a model contract. And he's going to suggest at least six to eight well-respected elevator companies and put it out there and let the best party win. No, and, and as a matter of fact, we probably will consider bringing somebody on board once a year, just to look at everything, to make sure we have that checks and balance so that none of us, the community, the staff have to go through this again.
Are we considering any kind of like legal action?
Yeah, actually, we are in the process of discussing it with our construction attorney. This library has never sued anybody since I've been employed here, but, but there is a first time for everything. Yeah.
If it was sixty, seventy thousand, it would have cost, and all this is speculated, but I guess.
There's a cost for the disruption.
I'm just trying to make sure everything costs, right? Like, so I'm happy to, you know, and we use attorneys for letters and things like that, but I just, I think it's a part of my, of my, my, my.
Right, I think, I think we have to make an informed decision. Because there's certainly the element of you that is feeling angry and vengeful. I mean.
Yes, but my colleagues, the league would love to charge for every cost.
Yeah, right. And, and I mean, we have to be rational. We have to make a decision, not based on emotion, but based on, on, on fact.
Can we find out what the city does, anything, when they put out RFPs and vendors and they kind of blacklist them or anything, or there's something? And if they have a process, then perhaps we can learn.
Yeah. That was Corey.
Yeah, we talked about this, like.
In New York, right? Well, what I'm saying is, and you're right, in New York, they have this thing called Passport.
Right, right.
So if I work with.
Previously Vendex.
Previously Vendex, right. So no matter what agency I work with, everyone knows my background.
So I'm curious if, if the city of New Rochelle has something or Westchester County has something. I, I don't know.
Westchester County has something. Westchester County has something. Yes, Westchester County.
There's also Angie's List and other like review.
But in Westchester County, you can go on site, they, they have something. I mean, that, you know, you might just call Jim Mazano and talk to him about it.
That's a great idea, Jim Mazano. He's our, he's our consumer protection person.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And he's also, yeah.
Nice guy.
You might just call him and talk to him about it. I think that might be a good way to go.
Yep, thank you.
Yep.
Will do.
And that will kind of cover what Corey and Daniel are saying and also the, so I think he's like the right.
And also they know we're sort of engaging in that and hopefully encourage them to do the best, just do right for the, the next process, right? Whenever the jack gets in and the installation of the, although I would love to now buy Beau for the library, I mean, the elevator, when it works, have a little, a welcome back party for an elevator.
I don't know, it's a, it'd be a painful party, but.
Sorry, I'm not doing what you're doing.
Just being honest.
That's a fair point.
No, 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 no. No, I like the idea of, of reaching out to, to Jim. He's, he's the right person. That's his job. He can steer us in, in, in the best direction. And you know, the thing that's so frustrating to me is our community is suffering, you know? People and families with strollers or seniors or people who are, have some sort of disability just can't go to those upper levels. We certainly accommodate, but it's not really the same. It's, it's frustrating. Yeah.
So and then the update on the RFP, we had discussed that we haven't had a buildings assessment done in over ten years. So we, the Buildings and Grounds Committee and Tom met with the CROCK Committee, who is made up of community volunteers. And they recommended, you know, doing this buildings assessment and they also helped us put together an RFP. So the RFP will be posted on our website tomorrow. And I, I think that the deadlines are in March. I, I know you worked with Richard, but I think the deadlines are very soon, so.
The water is March twenty eighth.
Okay.
The deadline is April eleventh.
Okay, so the submission deadline's April eleven. Okay.
Were the changes made that we had?
Yes, all those changes were made. Yours and Chuck's.
Great.
And are we getting a decent response so far?
We're just posting it tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
The other RFP, we can talk about that, but not yet.
Thank you. Anything else from Buildings and Grounds?
No.
Community Relations Foundation and Ugenachil's Partnership. Probably have to change that now. Merge into the foundation.
Dan, I have some stuff. Some notes from a good friend, Robert Davis. Standard programs have been going well and have been filled or nearly filled to capacity. Recent upgrades to theater, including the high-defened projectors, constated sound systems and the screen were made possible by the RFP Foundation and have made huge difference. Each week we are showing at least one film. The experience has been significantly enhanced by these improvements, digital presentations, concerts, a whole bit positive and made a great impact. There's a new series of films called Intentional Cinema is being conducted by Arnold Austin Anderson, Curry, Austin Rall, the New Rochelle resident, have the film up, created a film and led excellent pre-impulse film discussions.
Free tax help concludes on April eleventh. Once again, fifteen ARP trained volunteers are assisting hundreds of residents. And things not to forget, April seventh, the start of National Library Week in honor, we'll be hosting the Top Flight Read Six Fifty at three P M. And again, that's Sunday, April seventh. And. And things on the horizon, plans for Special Weeks of Children program, April twenty eighth to May fifth. This will be a celebration of Children's Book Week and the library's one hundred twenty-fifth anniversary, a tribute to the former Children Department head and made possible by the generous gift from her children. And they're gonna, they're gonna be, it's gonna be a reception, birthday cake and Storybook Saturday event with authors, costume characters and parade of children in their costumes Saturday, April, on the Saturday, May fourth, from eleven A M. to one P M. And they continue to plan for the major science exhibit that they will be hosting in the summer, titled In Search of the Earth's Secrets, a National Science Foundation sponsored exhibit, which will be the centerpiece for the summer reading theme, Exploring the Seven Seas. The New Rochelle Boys and Girls Club and the Girl Scouts have come on board as partners. Thirty-five high, high school students will be trained to be pop-up scientists for the summer reading kickoff on June twenty-second through the month of July and August. And there will be an enormous inflatable ship replica will be on the library green for the kickoff and a few other times during the summer. It will also travel to the Boys and Girl Club locations. And they anticipate that the exhibit will attract many people to the library this summer. And. Okay. There's a lot of programs happening, things to consider. That made the initial cut for the teen room. So they have an open mic, four sessions, forty-six attendees. At average, they have eleven, eleven, eleven point five average. So teens, you know, participate four times at the point due to scheduling. It has been held four times due to scheduling. And considerations might include a show or video performance for sharing on social, social media. So that's pretty, pretty awesome that we can put some, something like that. We can open to the public and it'll be fun. Gamer Clash, eight sessions, seventy attendants at an average of eight, eight point seventy-five. Teen Services have been doing video game programs in one form or another, twelve years running, no end in sight at this point, while attendance is not approached level. And in the past years, they're doing a Wall of Fame, which has been initiated, will be considered doing a prize tournament in the near future. Photography, six sessions, twenty-six students, teaches techniques with professional cameras as well as photo editing in the media lab. Attendance has been solid. And Tech Thursday is a science lab, seven sessions, eight students. An open lab, which make all STEM-related activities. And the program has not, has not been successful as hoped. At average, they have one student participating. While the hands-on experiment gets some traction, they will likely be done in the future on a pop-up basis. On Thursdays, we'll find a new program.
Yes, the question are all, these are all free.
These are all free.
So, so I constantly hear parents say, there's nothing for our teenagers to do, there's nothing for our teenagers to do, we need more out for school, we need more this. And I feel like, I'm sorry, and I feel like we're offering these programs and there still seems to be a disconnect between everything we're offering and what families know. So I'm not sure how to close that gap, but I'm listening to these thinking, well, my kids should do that when they get, you know, old enough. But I definitely feel I hear a lot of, and, you know, sometimes people just complain, but if it's not in their own living room. But, you know, I definitely feel like there's still this gap. And, and it might be that maybe, maybe we go to the high school and do some sessions or something to tell people what, you know, maybe we go to the high school.
And the middle, and the middle school.
And the middle school.
Certainly Isaac Young.
And, and maybe we go, not to PTA meetings, because as far as I can tell, not a lot of people go to those meetings. But instead, like ask the principal, can we, at one of your assemblies, can we be tagged on to the end or something? Or where you go and say, these are all the different opportunities. Because I just feel like the word's not out there as much as it is, considering these are all free.
You're, you're right. And I love the idea of, I, I think our challenge is find ways to connect with the school district. And, and sometimes it's, it truly is a challenge to get into, get into a building. But the other thing I want to say is, you know, we do have someone who's fairly new, a young man, Luis, and, and we hired and he's, you know, really sort of starting the process. And so we know there's a buildup. There's a opportunity to sort of get, to, to start more conversation between teens and families. So I think we're making some headway. But absolutely, we have to find a way to kind of crack the, crack the wall and really get into people's heads that the library is a place where you, you can send your teens and there are some interesting opportunities.
So I'm reading, and I, I won't read this out loud. Louis Presenial submitted a lovely essay on teen program initiatives and I want to review that and kind of read. But one of the things is I'm reading all of this. I think one of the ideas is that we should see if Louis can, at the beginning of school years, all of these schools, middle schools and high school have club signup day. It's an idea of to create something where we can have a table there with our information there, students sign up for clubs there, but we can provide initiative. And also see if we can have a kind of liaison relationship where perhaps him or someone where there is a robotics club at the high school. How can we get them to come here one day a week? Like, we can offer that space for them to participate. STEM groups that are in Albert and Isaac, how can we get them here to, again, partake in these programs in a collaborative way where we're not working as a lot of things happen in Rochelle in silos? So if we can collaborate and, and extend our resources, if they have a STEM club or engineering club or something at the school, how can we be an asset to that? We have a three D printer here. What can we do to help the robotics club to do that, but yet facilitate program and engagement and activity? So I, 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 I put that out there in, being a, a library that really engages in a community, we really need to be in there and how can we collaborate and attract people and say, these resources are here, rather than to say, well, we have programming and no one comes, but we really need to give them a reason to step into our doors and see what they can do with what we have and the capability.
I, I think, again, really one of the challenges is of, of finding the door that allows us to step in and have access to the high school, the students, the clubs. It's, it's not easy. You know, I mean, heck, to be honest with you, to obtain the summer reading list is sometimes a battle. I mean. So it's just not easy, but we would, we would welcome the opportunity. And we have a teen librarian and we have a teen assistant. And, you know, we have more resources now in terms of personnel and also a room with, with opportunities, whether it be the digital media lab or our large screen TV or the gaming systems and all of that.
Maybe, I think this all sounds very interesting. Maybe the one suggestion I would make is I'm sure if there's, if there's specific ideas we, as board members, would be happy, you know, happy to engage with our counterparts at the school.
Absolutely. Yeah, and I think we can, and I think we, we can also incorporate the foundation and to see how they can help us to in some advocacy areas with the school as, as, you know, we've met with some elementary schools, but I think we kind of need to push in and meet with whoever coordinates the clubs at Isaac, Alva Leonard at the high school, see how we can get there. And I, I will do my part too, to connect us there towards the end of this year and then bring us back in the beginning of the year, how we can connect that.
Yeah, I, I, we'd welcome the opportunity to collaborate and, you know, have somebody speak on our behalf to get us, to get our foot in the door.
I do have a question. Are those programs that he mentioned typically well-attended? I'm assuming that we've done those in previous years.
So it says here at average, so open mic has an average of eleven point five. So they have forty-six registered, but out of the forty-six, eleven point five at average. Gamer Class, seventy attendees, but an average of eight point seven five. Photography, twenty-six attendings, but average of four point three. Tech and Science Lab, eight attendees register, but an average of one point one, which, which is not doing that well. And Art Lab, seven attendees, no average on that yet. So, so. There's room. You know, so, yeah.
I mean, I'm also thinking about my, my daughter's three D printing class at Webster after school. I mean, I'm also thinking about my, my daughter's three D printing class at Webster after school and, well, she's taking it. And, and what's interesting is there is no three D printer at Webster, so they're gonna design their things and then send them away and in a few weeks they'll get them back, but I'm thinking like, why aren't they? Why aren't they using? Right, and it's the silo effect, right, and 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 I didn't, I didn't know that, I signed her up and. And then she's like, she's like, I don't know why I thought there'd be a three D printer in the classroom and I, and I thought that was kind of funny, but.
Yeah. I told.
Thank you.
I did want to add one thing, um and this doesn't have, it has to do with the school district, but not the groups that we're talking about targeting. But I was in touch with the six um art teachers at the elementary schools and they've agreed to participate. In the coloring book fundraiser that we had talked about. So the proposal, I'll just, I won't read the whole thing, but it was basically um. That we're proposing that the students create coloring book pages inspired by the children's library, the building, its history, the programs or activities that take place within. And or students' time spent at the library. Um so, one of the art teachers, I think she's at Ward, she came back with photos of the whole building inside and out within like a day. Danielle Marini?
I think, believe so, yeah, my daughter loves, yeah.
Yeah, so I was so impressed by that, so that started moving very quickly, so I just want to make sure that everyone's on board with that. Um which I'm assuming like we've talked about it before, but as far as putting the contest together. I think we should all probably have input on that, um and they wanted something soon so that they can get it done, they need about two months to do it. And we obviously want to get that done before the end of the school year, so.
So what do you need from us?
Well, I just have like a list, like the rules are, you need to be a New Shell resident, you know, um attending the school at certain ages.
Can we do it on email? Can we go back and forth?
Mm-hmm.
Is that, does that?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention it because they sort of need it soon, just because, you know, before the end of the school year, we don't want to.
Do you guys want to take a lead on it?
Right. This, this falls under special or?
Um it was under. Under community relations.
Yes, and then you could, like, to your point, take a crack at.
Just try to think if that's like, to make it easier. Yeah, why, why don't you send us uh the rules to the committee, all right, you're, you're, you're on it?
We're on it, the three of us.
Okay, I think you're on it.
I knew that.
We had that one meeting.
And we'll take a look at it and um.
Yeah, perfect.
And then we can send it out.
Okay, sounds good.
But so, would it be good to say that we should have everything set by the end of March or a little bit before that so they can have April, May to?
If every, if everyone can look at it like in the next couple of weeks, like a week or two, max, and I'll send it out tonight.
I was never a very good caller, so I don't know how to help my people. Um I think we have one other item on the agenda for community relations, which is there's three new board members for the foundation. And I, under their bylaws, we have to ratify the board members, so I think they're probably in your package, but the three, the three people are. Joan F. Clark.
She's my sister.
Oh.
No, I'm just kidding.
I mean, I'm not gonna read through the resume.
We don't have it.
We don't have it.
I mean, I can pass them around.
So why don't we run the lady and pass?
Yeah, and, and Ms. Clark will be, I believe, the treasurer for the foundation and has an extensive financial background. And um I know Chris Ellen and the foundation board were very excited to have her join the organization.
Yeah, so she works at Deutsche Bank Private Wealth Management, and then the other person is Miriam Laurie Moreau, who's a licensed real estate broker, and then the last one is Roderick Rolet.
I think so.
Um who is uh. Do experience HJ Sims Not-for-Profit Senior Living Finance.
He works with old people.
Uh or maybe he's retired now, looks, looks like he's, I think he's retired now. Volunteers with the Student Conversation Association, so.
Right, and um Laurie Morrow is um a longtime New Shell resident and was um very involved in the partnership with the Huguenot Children's Library. Almost from its inception and um she's a, she's a board member because as the foundation has um um combined with the partnership. We wanted representation, they wanted representation from the partnership on the foundation board and so she's a natural for that. And um Mr. Rolet, I haven't met yet, but I know Chris Ellen was raving about his um uh skill set and his um energy and his involvement. I guess particularly in regards to this upcoming gala, so they all sound like wonderful, wonderful additions to the foundation board.
All right, so we'll let that circu- circulate for a minute and vote in a minute. Um I don't think the finance committee, I don't think we have a report, um needs assessment committee.
I'll lead it, Ellen. Come through any coffee. I'll lead and then Whitney will come in. So um we finally got through the RFP process, um that's been posted. Um there were some questions that came back, uh which Wendy can talk to. Um also, I just wanted to make an announcement on the FOIL requests, um I know there was uh requested. The communication that we had with RXR, which I committed to when I was elected. Was to make sure that we didn't have any conversations with any developers until we did our retreat and we had the RFP and we stuck to that. The only conversation we had with RXR was because the request was made to obviously reach out to them to see what they were doing. Because they were um doing some testing and I think we are committed to it as a board and specifically to need the assessment committee. Our goal is obviously to figure out what the community wants first, so there'll be no conversations or um anything as far as. Anyone outside of what the community wants for the library, so that's what I'm to make everyone feel comfortable about that, that we are sticking to that path. And that's the path that we're heading down.
And at least we talked to them this because.
It was a request.
No, it was just the only reason we spoke to them was because we were directed there by the city, because the city said that they were the ones doing any activity that was happening.
Yep.
Did you have anything else?
Um yeah, so we, our um RFP deadline is tomorrow and we've had some questions, I think we've had. What, two?
Two.
Two so far um submitted and I think we'll probably expect a third. Um hopefully maybe more, but we, we just posted the questions, some questions posed by one of the um candidates, potential candidates and. Um and answered them and they are posted on the website, so you can see what people are asking. Uh there was largely related to um the, the level of um involvement. Yeah, interaction, community um meetings that the consultants are expected to attend, and we, you know, we're really wanting to make sure that whoever is in here and kind of helping us guide the process. Gets a good feel for the community, so um and spends enough time to really understand uh as our, um you know, just kind of more of us and as a proxy for being able to. Um pull together information that will help us know what the community wants.
Yeah. Whitney, aside from the website, where else was the RFP posted, was there a press release, did we? You know, because normally like grants, when it comes from state, you know, grants.gov and all that stuff, you know, did we, did we?
We did not, we did not, no, I mean, I think we just put it on our website, I think there were, there was a list um of, of, of reputable, um you know, just based on internet searching and. Um folks, we know that, you know, do this work that I work with in various capacities and that others of us work with in various capacities. Who um, you know, we'll see what they come up with and we gave them a, a budget amount to work with, so I think that will help us compare apples to apples as much as possible. Um and I have worked with several of them or just encountered them um in various capacities, so. Hopefully, some of them that we know do good work will, will respond.
Wonderful, anything else?
Yep.
Thank you.
I don't have anything.
You don't have anything?
Personnel.
Personnel.
Do we have anything? I don't think anything public, nothing. We have personnel, yeah, personnel.
So nothing for the wars?
Nothing for tonight.
Nothing for tonight.
Uh policy committee?
You just gave us something.
I just did. Um as part of, um yesterday, when we were closed, we used the time um for our advantage, we had training sessions. But we also scheduled a sexual harassment workshop, which you folks know by law, we are obligated to um to have all our employees undergo. And it was very, it was useful, he was very good, he's from our, the law firm that we use. And one thing that we um discovered was that we need to, we have a sexual harassment policy in place. But the state of New York has, has mandated that all organizations review their policies and they have a recommended new policy for us to consider. Um our attorney, Gary Silveira, who made the presentation, um late, late this afternoon, sent me the link to the Department of Labor recommended policy. And I think the policy committee should take a look at this policy and hopefully um make a recommendation and, and have it approved by the board.
Okay.
And in the, in the, we have a number of months, but.
Me, Sarah, Whitney, so I'll just shoot around some times for us to chat, is that right? I think we just got it.
Yep, yep, I just got it after, after the session.
Awesome.
Special projects?
Um we don't have a big update, just um we're still kind of waiting. Um there's interest from the foundation, as we know, to create a sculpture garden over on. That, right there, right outside and um I think there's interest in kind of pushing forward with a design. Um and to move forward with it conceptually, regardless of who might donate sculptures. Um and then maybe proceed in with, you know, kind of with a, a broader vision to perhaps um solicit donations or invite donations and. Um if we are fortunate enough to um to have donations that we thought, think that we may get in addition, then that's wonderful. Um so it's kind of a work in progress and sorry to be obtuse about it, but that's about all we know.
Great.
I do just have one final question now that I think about it, so the RFP, it was just posted on the website, is. Why don't press releases go out for those types of things, like a press release, I guess, is not going to go out for the RFP that's going to be posted on our website?
It, it certainly could, Sarah.
Looking at our website and they don't know us, then how are they knowing, I just?
To be honest with you, for an RFP for this sort of thing, it's been very rare that we have been involved in, in, in that kind of process, but we certainly could do an RFP for. The um building audit, um our, our, yeah, yeah.
I mean, if you, if you guys.
I've answered many RFPs, there are never, I've never seen one with a press release, it's really up to the entrepreneur or the company to find the opportunity. Like that's, that's from, yeah, that's.
Both him and Whitney are saying.
Yeah.
Never seen it.
No, just.
What we were wondering was, was there a um like a website, a place that, right? That's what, I mean, if there was a, if, I'm just not familiar with it, but if um if the, the board knew of a place that we could post this RFP. It would be, we'd be more than happy to um participate, follow it through.
If that's not typical, then I wouldn't say to do that, I'm just saying like, if people want to see our website, which maybe they're not, and if they don't know us, then they don't know.
Well, less, less, less of a press release and more appropriate for like a social media outreach or maybe like a tweet or um a Facebook post on our. On our Facebook page, something like um, I think what Sarah's trying to express is the need for transparency and more broadly broadcasting, and I agree with that, I mean, I think.
But I'm curious to explore what other libraries are doing and is WLS, is WLS to, to, to uh. Do other libraries that put RFPs or, you know, does WLS put it on their website, like I don't know, is there a good network of?
That's actually a good, that's a good idea, like WLS might.
I don't.
You don't think so?
I don't, I don't think they, um WLS is a um, is a clearinghouse for RFPs, but I think Daniel's. Point in relation to what are the um common practices, best practices of other libraries, I can find out tomorrow. I can post it, there's a director's um listserv where we all ask each other questions or policies or approaches.
I mean, at the least, we could put it on our Facebook page.
Right, but it's, it's also, we have a procurement procedure, right, so are we following the bigger questions, are we following our procurement procedure, we are.
We are.
Right, so we post it on our website, there's no requirement to do a press release, there's no requirement to do anything other than post it on our, on our website, and then we are also um invited or we are able to, to invite. Um you know, in um proposals, so I mean, if there's a strong feeling by anybody that we should be broadcasting the RFP um opportunity more widely. Then we, we would have to do a deadline extension and then make a loud, loud noise about it and try to put it out in as many, I think a press release is not the appropriate way to do it, but it's. It's, it's just not really, um it's not how you issue RFPs typically, but.
I guess the question would be for you and Cory, then how do you find out about this stuff, I mean, that's, that's.
You're looking for it and you're constantly soliciting.
You're a business owner, right, and you're looking for sales leads, so if you're looking for a sales lead, you gotta find those sales, you can, the sales don't come to you.
That's right.
But you gotta find.
But I, I, I do think Kara's, yeah, I think Sarah's point's a good one, you know, with the idea of the library being as open and as transparent as possible. And I think Daniel's contribution was, um what do other libraries do is also good and um I, I got, I can pursue that tomorrow, absolutely.
So, so, but then, so since tomorrow is the deadline and proposers who were, you know, on time and saw it and proposed or received an invitation.
For ours, I'm thinking about for yours.
For the one, for this one.
Moving forward.
Right, moving forward for the building audit, I think we, we have a window there and I'm happy to pursue it and, and I'm happy to share what I learned with the rest of the board. And if it's something significant, you know, we, we don't need necessarily a motion to, to um advertise or approach or reach out to.
So you're not talking about the needs assessment RFP, you're talking about the building audit RFP.
I'm just, I'm talking about going forward, but I do think that, you know. There is this mistrust regarding the needs assessment committee, um that I.
What?
First time I've heard that.
Hiring a consultant and doing this uh summit and gathering information and there is the feeling that. Board members are trying to steer maybe the consultant in a particular direction, just because of development, so I just want to put that out there. I understand that there are people that, you know, follow the deadline and, you know, you don't want to take away from that, but I just want to put it out there.
No, it's good.
It's, it's fine, I know, I'm just.
It's good, it's good, and I thank, I thank you for your um honesty, really, uh it's helpful, so thank you. Um I think no matter what we do, there will be mistrust.
That's right.
So I could, we could do it for a week, we could, we could push the deadline out for a week and we could do everything you say. And I feel I'll come back here next week and I'll still hear next month that there's mistrust, so we can, we can. We can continue to be as transparent and talk about what we're doing and we'll continue to do that. Um if you guys feel it's worth it to push it out, I'm not sure, Sarah, that that's going to make, I don't, I don't see that making a difference, but. But, but I do appreciate you being honest.
Right.
I really do.
So I do want to just chime in about the needs assessment committee.
As chair.
It's not about development, actually, it's about what the community wants. And whatever the community says that they want for this library is what we're going to execute, so it actually has nothing to do with development.
I was wondering, what is the, what is the steering have to do with development? I don't understand that.
Yeah, I don't understand that.
Well, these are community engagement.
Right, it's a community engagement, so I guess the question would be, Sarah, can you clarify on needs assessment dealing with development, I don't think so.
Yes, the, people think that the needs assessment committee was developed um. Out of the response to, you know, maybe the library was going to be sold to developers. And so, just I think the timing of the creation of the needs assessment committee. That was a little suspicious to some people and the fact that we need to get community input when a certain portion of the community felt that. They came out strongly and they were opposed to it, so that was their input, so why are we gathering more?
I'm not on the needs assessment committee, if I could just, my perspective, and I think I've said this before, um but I'll just repeat it again. Um last spring, spent a lot of time with Dan and Whitney and Cory, sort of going to the neighbor associations, and the one thing I feel like I did report back was that it would have been nice to have had data. To help support just some of the areas that we thought needed improvement and that if I learned any lesson from last spring. Was that it was hard for me to go out with sort of my anecdotal sort of sense of needs and certainly one limited focusing with just what, probably what my kids see and need and that it would have been nice to have had like a top-down. And so when the thought of this ad hoc committee came up, I. And so when the thought of this ad hoc committee came up, I remember and still feel very supportive of it because I felt that the genesis of it was more, how do we advocate for what we need? How do we even know what we need? How do we partner with the staff and the community and the best trends for similarly sized libraries on a more holistic basis as opposed to, you know, in an ad hoc like the elevated burden of the RFP? Like just really thinking comprehensively about the needs of the library and what future library needs. And what made me, and still makes me excited, so just to affirm what I believe the role of the committee is, is to be proactive and forward-thinking and design this in a way that partners with best trends, community needs and staff. And I thought and still think that the purpose of the RFP was to have a neutral sort of professional lead those dialogues and conversations and kind of bring it in. Because I think neither of us would be positioned to do that for various reasons, including just scope of limitations of our own professional capabilities. So I just wanted to say that. I'm not on the needs assessment committee. I only really know what y'all report back. But even from that first PowerPoint presentation that you made, just talking about the big picture of the impact on libraries.
Right.
I was, I was sold before, but I was certainly sold. And feel that you guys have kept us in the loop, certainly. I kind of agree with you, Jo. If extending it a week or two helps the cause, like it doesn't hurt. I also just want to plug, because I feel like I haven't done this. For the new social media, I just, I've loved following what the, like, I'm seeing more great things on Instagram and on Facebook. So I think you're doing a tremendous job. And so if the thought is to like use social media, then like by all means, she's doing a great job. I feel like I know more about the library, certainly. So like if that helps the cause, then I'm, I'm happy to support that as well.
I think what we learned from going on the trail, going to different community groups, was that they didn't want a developer, the library to be sold to a developer, but no one knew what they wanted.
Right.
And that was really what it was, because no one knew, no one had an answer. We just knew, everyone knew they didn't want that.
Well, that's exactly right. The, the, and I think that needs assessment absolutely was created out of the, the opposition to the library, the perception of the library being sold. I think it absolutely was created, not, I don't understand the suspicion around being responsive to the request of the community to know more. So we're not here to do nothing. So if you're saying that the petition states that we are supposed to do nothing and that we should be satisfied with that, that's not why we were elected, is to sit there and say the community doesn't want X, so we're going to do nothing. That's not why we're here. We're here to do something in relation to improving the library. And if we know that we don't want to sell the library, fine, we're not selling the library, but we need to improve the library. That's always going to be true. That's why we're here. That's why we were elected. And I'm, I get angry feeling at, you know, defending ourselves constantly against this suspicion when all we're trying to do is be responsive and talk to us anytime. Tell us what you want to know. We will tell you what you want to know.
And I, I concur with that and what Yedira was saying. It's, it just really is really involving the community. I'm really excited about that because I want to make sure, and I think everyone here agrees, that we're going to target pocketed areas that we've probably never walked into the doors before to get the input of members of our community. And it's, it helps us, you know, as we're talking about this budget, to look forward and say, hey, this is what the community was looking for, asking for, and, and Tom and board, let's see what we can create and come up with. I mean, it, it helps us in, look at our team. I mean, I go back and look at our team numbers, right? With low participation, how can we improve that? How, what can the community help us do? What are the means? So there are different levels to this as, as a whole. And again, I, I, I sit here, again, being born and raised here and seeing how things are going about this city. It saddens me as, as I have a two-year-old that will eventually go into the school system in this community, that we are in this realm of seeing things in a negative, you know, glass half-empty and always going against it rather than working together. Again, organization, religious entities, search of just working in silos. And, and everyone says we're together, we're diverse, but no, we are not. And I'm telling you this right now, that we are trying to be the best that we can. Look at our board now of how diverse we are. We try to communicate and talk. And, and again, I apologize if anyone takes it into offense, but we are passionate about this library. We're passionate about our community. We're passionate about our people. We walk in the street and shop in the same stores and breathe the same air of New Rochelle. So I, I hope that we get a lot of participation. We can't do it alone. And we encourage, again, the community to come and help us as we proceed with, with this, this assessment, to really engage in pocketed areas, to get the biggest picture that we can get, to make this the best assessment and outcomes and results that we can for our community and our library.
And also for anyone who's listening, feel free to spread the word about the RFP that's out there on our websites. Share the link with people that you know and trust and think would be good candidates.
And Tom, I checked on the WLS. It seems that other libraries are putting RFPs. I just saw something for Peak Skill Library. I don't know if it's, we can, you know, I don't know, you know, you could check in on that if we can put in our, our RFP on there too.
So, so I guess the technical question is, are we comfortable with extending this?
I'm perfectly fine with that. I think it's a, I think it's a fine idea.
That's a decision.
That's a decision that we're going to extend it for a week. And in the meantime, for the needs assessment, we will put it on social media. We'll put it on Facebook. We'll put it anywhere people suggest.
So we just have to update, I can send you an updated RFP with a new date, deadline extended. We'll do one more week, so March 22nd.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I think that people will be very happy with that.
I hope we get lots more responses. Triple the number of responses now, right?
One thing that I might suggest the needs assessment committee consider, and maybe this already exists and I just forget, is whether you want to have any sort of brief mission statement kind of description of what the committee is doing.
We did that.
We did that. We did that, right. Yeah.
Maybe it's a reminder.
Is it on our, it's on our website? Ask that, yeah.
Okay. That might just be, and maybe something to think about is, you know, given it's an ad hoc committee, maybe we think about what we, what we. Given it's an ad hoc. Yeah, I mean, I, I think my point is more, given it's an ad hoc committee, maybe we think about when we, before we have the discussion, the meeting, we remind people what the purpose of the committee is.
That's a good idea.
Given it was formed ad hoc. Thank you. I think we have an item of business just to go back to, which is sort of nominating the three folks to the foundation board. Did everybody have a chance to see their resumes?
I didn't see that one, but I saw the other two.
Oh, oh, there's two of them?
There's three.
There's three.
You didn't see any of these? I saw this one.
The one with the staple in it that I didn't see.
The Clark.
Your sister.
Could I, I just have one very brief. Dan did a great job sharing all the things that are happening at our library. And he talked about Children's Book Week. And this is a, really an amazing week that will start on the 29th and end on May 4th. And it's to honor not Louise Sonnet, who was the head of children's services prior to Kathy Cronin. Louise passed away last year, ironically, not in terms of chronology, not very far from Kathy. And her, Louise worked here many years full-time as the head of children's services, came back as a part-time person. And after she passed, her family made a very significant and generous philanthropic donation to the foundation. And that donation was in the idea of, of, of creating an event, an annual event to celebrate Louise's life, Louise's liance, and, and to focus on her love of children and reading. And that's what this, this Children's Book Week is about, is celebrating books, children, and Louise's legacy in terms of that here in our community. So I just wanted to let you all know that. Good to know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Has everybody seen the resumes?
Yes.
Yes. I'll make a motion to, do I need to say anything specific or just make a motion to approve?
Yep.
Lori Morrow, Joan Clark, and Richard Rollet.
Rod, Rod, Rodrick.
Rodrick.
I don't have the resume.
Rollet?
Rodrick, Rollet.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. And then, so I think we'll move to the public to be heard. Marjorie Sacks.
Good evening. So that was a pretty passionate interchange that was going on, which I actually really appreciate because there's a lot of history to all of this concern about the library and development. And I'm not sure that all of you are aware of that. We've been doing this for, for a long time. And even in the master agreement from the city, which was really inappropriate, there's a talk, there's a part that talks about the sale of the library in the master developer agreement. And I would really suggest that you look at that. And it will really ground you in the history that this community has been very scared about this library being sold to developers. And there were many people who used to be on the library board who were very gung ho about this library being sold to developers. And I think it's really important that you look at that history because trust takes a long time to build. And when people stop trusting, it takes a long time to build that back. So please educate yourself about this history. There have been things that have been going on with developers. It started out being RDRXR. They're now in court with each other. They've split up, so it's no longer RDRXR. It's RXR and RD. So there's a lot of history here. And I just think it's really important that you appreciate that. And I think there is some confusion about the needs assessment committee. It's one thing, you know, what your intentions are, and you know what your intentions are. But the timing of it was difficult. And it's also curious that you talk about you won't speak to developers until after this period. But then why would you speak to developers if you really are committed to not selling the library? So these are questions that people in the community have. You see us here, we always have these questions, but there are many other people who do. So you really are going to have to work at building the trust of the community. I think in the meeting last spring, you know, where people were, were turned away because it was so full, you, you got a sense of how people care about this library and how they want it to stay here. And I think it would be, would be great to find out what the community wants. We're not at all against improvements to this library. We are against this library being sold to developers, period. And we are really concerned about all the development that's going on, the parking lots that are available for developers that are right adjacent to the library. And we really think you need to be concerned about that and be proactive about it and not just worry about whether parking is going to be lost. These are really important issues. The Brooklyn Botanical Gardens is now facing two high-rise buildings that are potentially going to really ruin many of the plantings and many of the parts of the Brooklyn Botanical Libraries because of the shade. And you really have to be concerned about that. So I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I appreciate the, the, the going back and forth with this. It is really important that it not be everybody on board and everybody just know that we have good intentions. It's much deeper than that. It runs much deeper than that.
Maryam, I'm sorry, DeKane?
So I'm going to also talk about development that was like last on my list, but since that's what we were just discussing. I want to thank Sarah for her point of view because I thought it was very representative of what a lot of people are feeling. So echoing what Marjorie just said, there was a lot of concern that this building, this library would be so, it's prime location for developers. There's a lot of development going on in New Rochelle that when you speak to most people in New Rochelle, no one knows why this is all going on, why our skyline is being changed like this. No one is in agreement that all of this building is this formula of developers coming in in 10% housing for low income while they're getting $30 million tax abatements for 40 years. No one is, is, is happy about this. This is rezoning everything, gentrification is happening, which equals genocide, period. And this library, we understand, we, we're not, you know, we're clear that this is, this is something that's very much interested in this area. So we, we, we're, we want you to, you know, you said you're not elected to do nothing, but you're elected to make sure you follow the desires of the people and, and to protect what we have. So that's something that I think you really have to do a good job at letting people know. When we last had a meeting with the mayor, this breakfast meeting, I think it was here at the library, and we talked about this. And he's like, oh, well, we're not selling. No decision has been made. Yedira, you were there. But if you have developers or somebody who's saying that they could give you a bigger and better place, well, why shouldn't we listen to them? So when is that conversation going to happen? What is it that they're going to offer us? And how is it going to happen? You say, well, we're not going to sell it as long as the community doesn't want it sold. But who you listen to from the community, how you define that, is, is a mystery to people. Because some people get listened to and others don't. And how you determine this is what the community tells, because I can tell you, I don't feel like the community told you that this is the kind of development that we wanted to see in New Rochelle, but it's happening. It's happening at an accelerated rate. Some of you guys are on the IDA and all of that, so you understand that. So it's the same thing with this. So that's the development piece. Now, the other thing that I was thinking about, when we, when you were talking earlier with the security guards and then that's not even knowing the whole story with the elevator, one of the things that I thought about, and it sort of talks about the budget, is we have this habit of hiring consultants, hiring outside people versus having our own folks. Supposedly, it, it costs us less. It usually happens when we, we cut the workers that we have that become vested in the, in the building and are interested and, and take care of the building the way they should. And we say, oh, well, we'll just contract it out. And what often happens is what we got with the elevator. You pay a lot of money and it doesn't get done right. They don't have responsibility for, for it. And, and now it's like, well, you know, we're going to try to figure. So I wondered, how much does it cost us? Like, how much do we really save to have outside people working for us, security? Having in-house elevator people or maintenance people versus outside? I don't know what that is, but I'd like to find out what it is. Like, and really, is it, is it beneficial? Especially when you look at this whole elevator thing. And I hope we're going to sue them because it sounded like it cost us a lot of money to be able to at least get them to say, okay, we'll pay for the part that we damaged. But are they paying for the lawyers? Are they paying for? It sounds like it's costing us a lot of money. So not just suing, but like Mr. Cory said, I can't see your last name, I'm sorry. But to, you know, let, let it be known to whoever's out there that these vendors are shady, as you say. So that was my thought with that one. The other thing about the, the library, you're right, it's a great space. And I think we have to build a relationship with the children much earlier than junior high school and high school. By then, I got to kidnap my kids to bring them to the library now. Whereas when they were younger, you know, they liked going to the library. So if we build this as a community space, one of the things that popped in my head as we were talking here is, is the, the museum has, do fun things with the kids. The museums have, you know, a night at the museum in the city. So something that we could maybe do to build fond memories with the children is have a night at the library, where they actually get to learn all about the library and really get into it. I don't know. It's just a thought. But where we can really start to build some fond memories and that they know that this is a place for them. Also, make it more of a community space. I know NAACP was looking for some space. So maybe we. space. I know NAACP was looking for some space. So maybe we could start to invite more of the local community organizations to work from here, to bring people in more. I don't know if it's against your bylaws and stuff, but that was just a thought.
We just don't have the space.
Well, maybe we could do that in the assessment and figure out how we could expand it and all that, you know. But in the future, right, to, as we're building and expanding, not selling, but to include the community. Okay, those were some of the ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
I don't know if I'm going to be able to hear you on the camera.
You have to come up, come up, George.
This thing goes in and out.
Can we, can we bring it? Don't worry, it's all over, it's all over, I'm going to bring it to you. No, you can't walk it to her.
No.
The wireless. The wireless, hold on, hold on. There you go, right there.
Oh, oh, well. We were trying to.
So the microphone system, honestly, it's going in and out. And there's sometimes we can hear, and sometimes we can't. So I don't trust that. So I'm going to use my large mouth and mouth to tell you. You were talking about communicating, communicating with our youngsters in our school system. I'm going to tell you one thing that's very important in this community. If you go and send your notices to the black churches here, the Remington Boys Club, the Feeny Park, I believe, or my club, the Feeny Park.
Mascara.
Mascara. Thank you, sweetheart.
You've been around a long time.
I can't tell them my age here. Do use that as a communication, because I have a grandchild, well, they're my great-grandchildren I'm talking about. And, and, you know, I tell them what's going on, because they don't get it in the school. And I'm not blaming, you know, all the blame on the school, but maybe the children just don't listen, or they don't go where they can hear these things. But if you, I can guarantee you, you will see a change if you, you know, communicate with the black churches in this city, and they get the message, and they work at making sure their children will be a part of, of this system. And they need to, because I know my, I, I think about my daughter. Every Saturday she was here, every single Saturday, God woke me up, and at 1:30, I was usually in this building. And I did that. And now, and she still goes. And we, at one time, one week, she was reading six books a week. And on Sundays, we would discuss her reading. So please, get in touch with the black churches and the boys and girls clubs here. And I guarantee you, you will see a change. I can guarantee that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other? Okay. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.